I call the order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody coming out on this rainy evening. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the victims that were killed and hurt in New York City. What a meeting minutes. Meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth.
I don't know if I have all the pages. It's a couple of pages in. Yeah, so, okay. Ah, got it, okay.
Like I said, they're in there, they're just out of order.
Yeah, I was just like, okay. At least my version is a couple of pages in.
Right.
I'll entertain a motion to accept a minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to accept a minutes of October twenty-sixth and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? Cricket?
Yes.
You got to abstain.
Oh.
You weren't here.
Oh, wait a minute, no, I thought you said the October twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Oh, wrong one, I apologize. You're right, never mind.
Abstain. Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
I abstain.
That's the worst thing for me to do.
You got to abstain?
Pretty good.
Okay, and I'll say yes. On the all business or open issues that we had discussed from the last meeting, there's two, uh, two things in the packet. The first one is a request for emergency reserve fund transfer for seventeen hundred dollars for VEDAR. I hope I captured all your, your questions on there, Julie, when I brought it up.
We're talking about this sheet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We already voted on this, didn't we?
This what?
We already made, I already made a motion on this last meeting.
Right, you made a motion, but we have to take, in order to take and end up having it actually do, we have to take and end up going through this process with the, with the sheets.
Oh, all right, well, I'll make a motion that we expend seventeen hundred dollars from the emergency reserve account for training and software access to VEDAR.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a thought, does this meet what we, what we state for, uh, to justify a transfer from the emergency reserve to pay for other things? It just seems we're bending it a little to benefit the committee. I understand, you know, that's, that's the availability of funds. And if the town had all the recommendation, uh, that we have a, an, a, a training fund to pay for all training for departments and committees and so forth. And I did see the memo with a suggestion from Cato about this. I just, I just have to question if it actually meets the requirement that we put on our own reserve transfer when other departments or other entities come before us to request money from the reserve. It's not a for or against statement, it's just, I, I, it has the appearance of, I, I, I don't know if it meet, really truly meets the standard that we have in our paperwork.
Can you, can somebody pull up the, uh, I, I thought I had a copy of that.
I think, um, I'd like to respond to.
That's what?
I'd like to respond to Mr. Bennett's.
Okay, that's fine.
Comments, because I can understand where you're coming from. I would say that back in, when we voted on the budget for FY eighteen, we were getting budget to actual reports that had actual information in them, and we currently do not, and that started in August, which is one fiscal year. I think without access to VEDAR and be a, being able to generate the financial reports that we need in order to make recommendations and to make sure the budget is being implemented as it was voted at town meeting, I think we need to have access to the VEDAR system as a read-only, and I think we need the training in order to do that, and I think the department heads need that training as well.
Let me ask a question, do, do we know why the, the report was changed?
The answer that we got back from the accountant was that the town voted to take and end up going this, and there was no, there was no actual vote to take and change the budget to actual in this manner. It was, I guess it's a, it's a stretch by them, I, I don't, I don't know, I didn't get, I, I, but it, they, we, we voted on a budget that only had the upper level as far as, it said selectmen.
Yeah.
And it just broke it down to departments, so I guess, my assumption, and you know how that goes.
Yeah.
Uh, my assumption is because it was voted that way, that's, that's why, uh, the administrator and the accountant thought that, uh, they could end up changing it so that they reduced the, the next level down, so it gave us, uh, a better view as to individual accounts that are actually in the budget book. I mean, this does not follow the budget book per se, it does follow somewhat, and e- even that, I, I, I'm not sure it follows even the, the budget itself, because they said selectmen, and if you look at the budget, the actual, it's broken down into like four or five categories.
Yeah.
And some of those had sub, subcategories, which, that's what we were looking at o- over the past year.
Yeah, okay, because, here's my thought, all right, we haven't changed systems, I'm putting my IT hat on, we have not changed systems. Um, I'm not familiar with VEDAR, but if a report is good from one year, it should be good to the next year, and so we, i- if we produce our own reports, we may not be looking at the information the same way, we will not, even though the ultimate source is the same, when we're talking about, we may not be talking about it in the same sense as other folks that get a more summarized version of, of those reports. And I'm just a little concerned that we're going to be talking apples to oranges as opposed to.
I do, I do have a copy of the policy and reserve fund transfers. Uh, let me just read the first paragraph or so, and I think it might clear up some of this. "The purpose of the policy states to identify the criteria the advisory will use to rule on requests for transfers of emergency reserve fund. The creation and use of the reserve fund is governed by Mass. General Law forty, uh, Chapter Forty, Section Six of the Mass. General Law. The reserve fund is a sum of money appropriated at town meeting to use at the discretion of the advisory covered to cover extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures, expenditures that arise during the year. This means that if the advisory committee does not feel that a request is sufficiently unforeseen or extraordinary as defined below, is not eligible for the reserve fund transfer." I mean, that's in the first paragraph. Uh, extraordinary is beyond what is usual, ordinary, regular, established, a cost not arising from normal activities in the course of business, exception in character, amount, extent, degree, et cetera, noteworthy and remarkable.
Well, I think it meets the requirements from, in my opinion anyways, of, of, of the, what you just read. I'm just still questioning.
This was voted on by the, by the committee?
Yeah.
Uh, back, oh, almost a year ago now. Yeah, I think it was, yeah, before, even before that.
I mean, we've always had guidelines on what we would use for emergency reserve money. I would say that it is unforeseen in that we could not predict that the accountant was going to change the way we were getting the budget to actual. And I, I think we need that level of detail in order to do our jobs properly. That's why.
Yeah, I agree with that, you know, we do need to see it.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second, correct? Just right.
Who, who was the second on that, was that Bob?
Bob, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Had discussion? And this is on a transfer of seventeen hundred dollars to pay for training and software access to VEDAR, to get to the level of detail that we need in VEDAR. I give out everybody, just a minute to think about that. If there's no other discussion, vote is, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, I will end up processing that with the accountant. Let me just sign this. The next one was asked for by Bev, there was, there was a little bit of discussion. Uh, she's not here to sign the document, so I, I don't know if anybody wants it, it's also from the emergency reserve, and this is regards to, uh, getting some additional monies for paying to attend the Association of Town Finance annual meeting.
I thought we had enough money in there to pay for the people who submitted.
Uh, we have enough to take and end up paying for, uh, three people that are new, but not the existing members that went. It was unforeseen that we were going to have, we went typically, when we put in a budget, we put in for, uh, three people like it the year before, uh, not knowing that the actual agenda was by far one of the better ones I, I've seen, and for us all gonna attend, that's, it was unforeseen that we were gonna all attend, in my estimation, but that's, so she asked me to put this in for her, and, but she's not here to take and end up signing this, so I don't know if we want to take and table this, or, uh, somebody else wants to take and end up signing in her stead.
I think we should table it.
Can I have a motion on that then?
I make a motion to table the request for a hundred and ten dollars out of the emergency reserve to pay for attending the annual town finance committee annual meeting. And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We can bring that up at the next meeting. I did give us copy of every, everybody, a copy of the one that I was gonna be putting in with a receipt for the, uh, the annual meeting for myself. Bev did ask me about the, the fact about she, she didn't have her receipt, I told her to contact the, uh, Darlene, uh, oh, yeah, I did, uh, can't remember her name now. Ms., Ms. Baker, it's in, it's in your packet.
Yeah.
Oh, Denise Baker, uh, to end up getting a receipt. Uh, I mean, I haven't heard back from anybody else, this is the only one I have at this particular time.
And we each have to do our own separate one, right?
Pardon me?
We, we each have to fill out a, a separate form.
Well, she suggested that they can do all at one time, but I, I'm not sure, I, I don't know when everybody's gonna get their receipts.
Receipt?
Do you have a receipt?
A receipt?
Okay, she's got one here.
I got one, if you want it. Or I can do my own.
Could you make out the paperwork and we'll?
Yep, sure, I will make out the paperwork.
You got a copy of that, I mean, it's just to fill it in, and
Yeah.
We can end up doing it at the next meeting, if that's what you want to end up doing. I, I don't have capability of adding it to this right now.
All right, I, I can definitely do that.
There any questions on this, uh, I'll entertain a motion on this one, or anything else for, for folks? Any motion? To allow us to put it in, fifty-five dollars to go to the Association of Town Finance annual meeting?
So right now we have enough money to cover that one, right?
Yes, we do.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we submit that reimbursement for attending the finance committee conference.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? I don't know if you've got a, got your receipt either.
I got a receipt at home, I just don't have it here. It's a paper receipt.
Okay. I mean, we did mention we needed receipts, and I did send it out to, to folks.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for paying the fifty-five dollars for myself to attend the Associate Town Finance. Uh, I'll, I'll ask that the Vice Chair and other members sign this, I'm not gonna sign my own here, doesn't make sense to take, do that. With that, I'll, the vote on this is, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
If you'll sign that, Mr. Bennett, right there. And put on Vice Chair, so that they don't get confused.
All right.
And have, uh, Bob sign over here, ask committee members. Sign over here, it's right hand side. Uh, there was one other thing in the packet, the origin of the Municipal Finance Committee. Uh, I, I sent that out to everybody, uh, to, to view, uh, for potentially, uh, creating a, uh, PowerPoint for presentation at, at a later date. There is some additional, uh, information that I got that can, can be added. Uh, I'll entertain that we can end up, uh, tabling this for now, till a later meeting, but it is, we, we actually have this, so we can end up making a presentation.
I'll make a motion that we table this.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. One other thing before we get into the, the pre-town, is that I was looking at the schedule for the upcoming meetings, uh, during the next couple of months. Our next meeting is on the fifteenth, that's after the annual, the special town meeting. The meeting after that is December sixth and the twentieth. The question I have here is on the twentieth. I mean, last year we voted to take and end up still keeping our meeting, but I'm not going to go under the assumption that, that people want to meet on the twentieth, which is, uh, the, the week, the, the, well, uh, Christmas is on the following, the following Monday. The other date would be, uh, in January, which would be the first, second, the third, which is the first Wednesday, those two dates. I'd like to take and end up having people think about those dates, whether or not we want to meet or change the dates, we can end up changing the date for, in November, uh, it's, we could meet on the twenty-ninth as well as meeting on the sixth to take a pla- take the place of the twentieth, or we can leave that in place. Does any discussion on that right now? Yes, no, or we table it till the fifteenth?
I think we should just think about it, look at our schedules and then.
Okay, everybody take a look at your schedule on that.
I'm sorry, it was, uh, currently it's scheduled, I thought you said the November sixth and the twenty-fifth, the next two meetings?
Yes.
Six would be a Monday, isn't it?
Uh, no, the, the, December.
December sixth.
It'd be December sixth.
Yeah, and they're scheduled for the fifteenth, which is the day after town.
Fifteenth would be our next meeting, which, this month, and the sixth and twentieth would be in December, and the third would be in January, that's right after. After New Year's, I, I don't know if anybody's still celebrating three days later.
I, I was more, a question about the November fifteenth meeting. If for some reason town meeting, um, goes on the second night, w- would that be that night, and does that cause us any, any concerns?
That's a good question. We can cancel if it goes over.
All right, it would.
And, and do a reschedule for the, the twentieth, if that happens.
Okay.
Is that gonna be left up to the Chair to do that, uh, or we still have it on the fifteenth?
I'm, I'm fine with the Chair making that, that decision.
Okay, I'll be at the call of the Chair then. Thank you. Okay. That's all the issues on the, that, and to business. Like you taking, uh, make a motion to, uh, look for a motion to go into the pre-town meeting for the discussions, uh, and make recommendations on the special town meeting.
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
And I'll vote yes.
I also passed out to everybody this evening, because there was questions on, uh, some of the summaries. We had our, our first reading, uh, of the, uh, the warrant article at that particular time, since then there's been some stuff added to the, to the draft, which the selectmen will be voting on. If I can end up having the Vice Chair read, uh, page four, the moderators, so that we are clear on this.
From the moderator, "A town meeting is run by a town moderator who the voters elect for a three-year term. Our bylaws call for the most current issue of town meeting time to be considered the general guideline for all procedures of town meetings except those procedures already provided for by the bylaws. In addition, I, the moderator, have some general rules that I follow. One, call the meeting to order and go over some housekeeping issues such as location of, uh, I believe that's fire exits, asking you to silence your cell phones, electronic devices, et cetera, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Note the constable's return of the warrant to show it was properly served and posted. Introduction of special guests and the like. As I call each article, a motion will be read and seconded generally by the select board unless a citizen's petition, and will be shown on the screen behind the stage. Moderator will then ask for recommendation of the advisory committee. He has a note, adjust the vote, lots of luck. Return to the motion maker for any explanation. Open the floor for discussion, includes, including first recognizing the advisory committee for any particular reasons behind their recommendation. Anyone wishing to speak on any issue must first proceed to a microphone, be acknowledged by the moderator. Moderator will not entertain any shout-outs, and you must use a microphone unless otherwise permitted by the moderator. You will be asked to state your name and address every time you're given permission to speak. You may also be asked if you are speaking as a resident or on behalf of a board or committee. Any amendments to main motion must be submitted to the moderator in writing. Any, uh, unruly disorderly person will be given a warning and advised they are out of order. If the situation continues, you'll be escorted out of the meeting and placed in a convenient place until the meeting is adjourned. If I am not certain of a voice vote, or if a vote declared by the moderator is immediately questioned by seven or more people standing, or recognized by the moderator, I will proceed with a hand count. Otherwise, general parliamentary procedure, common courtesy, will rule the meeting." That's Derek Hall, the town moderator. That's Derek Hall, the town moderator.
Since we have read the actual articles, yes?
And I'm trying to find it in here. I thought that our town moderator had a one-year term, another three-year term.
Pardon me?
Our town moderator?
Yeah.
I thought was elected to a one-year term, not a three-year term.
I think you're correct.
So...
It's a one-year term.
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah. I'm just...
I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I'm just...
These are already printed.
Yeah, it's not a three-year term.
It's been a one-year, it's been a one-year term.
I mean, there are several errors in here, but...
Yeah, well, you know, I believe in cut and paste at times, but you gotta read through it.
That can and should be noted.
Yeah.
If at town meeting floor, this is read on the floor, or maybe just general correction at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, the Select Board is supposed to review this on Monday, so it may, it may change between now and then. Since we have read the actual motion, I will dispense with the actual reading of the motion. If anybody wants to go through the summaries and anticipated motions, I'll leave it up to each individual on that. And we'll open up the discussion for Article One.
Because I'm new to the board, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the last meeting. You may have already covered this. How comfortable is everybody with the fiscal twenty thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen amounts that are changing? I assume it's because of the audits and everything that they found errors. Is that a fair question to ask? I don't know. No, okay, never mind.
Well, no, I believe at the audit report meeting last April, one of the points was it was a two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-dollar shortfall. And now it's a, this is a two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-dollar article. So I think you can just draw your own conclusions from that. I, you know, wouldn't want to sway you in either way.
No, no, I get it.
Well, just to take and answer your question, Cricket, we can end up voting this up or down, or no recommendation, or also putting a recommendation, whatever it may be, and the reason why we voted a particular way, or we had a question for clarification as to why this is different than the... I mean, I asked when I went to the Selectmen's meeting a while back if any of the Selectmen or the Administrator were going to be here tonight, and you see, you see no one to ask that question, so I can't.
Okay.
We're going to have to wing it based upon what we have as information that we've looked up or on the sheet here.
Okay. It's about twelve-thousand-dollar difference. All right.
I'll entertain a motion one way or the other for Article One, unless somebody wants to read the summary and the anticipated motion.
I agree with the basic, we need to pay these.
Yep.
All right, and the only place to pay it is from free cash.
Yep.
So it's the amount, and why the amount changed, that I have a question for, and I think if, you know, if I vote to support this as it's written, I'm not going to get an explanation of why the number changed.
Yep.
From the audit amount.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Relating to this article, it got me looking around, there was some comments through emails that were sent out by the town administrator and pointed to the newly signed October tenth, two thousand seventeen, financial policies by the Board of Selectmen. And under the policy, the first, it says under free cash, it goes through a background, and this is under the policy, and the first words in here, "The town of Templeton will continue to avoid using free cash to fund the operating budget, except in the event of an emergency or extraordinary or unforeseen events described in A1 above," which A1 goes through the same, basically just says for extraordinary adventures and unforeseen You know, and it goes on to, you know, another section, "The town will strive to have its free cash certified at time of use for the fall meeting. Free cash may be used for certain one-time expenditures such as major capital projects, emergencies, or other unanticipated expenditures and deficits, i.e. snow and ice, to replenish other reserves. Free cash will not be depleted in a year, so that the following year's calculation will begin with a positive number." You know, I just... It just makes me wonder if, you know, the fall town meeting that we're going to, you know, in a couple of weeks here, we're already violating the policies that were just put in place by these articles. I'm just, you know, it kind of makes you go, hmm. You know? And, you know, it goes on to say just how the town Administrator should do his breakdown of the budget in this policy, and it, you know, it doesn't allow for a lot of clarification on a few of these articles. So it's just for thoughts.
Is there a motion on Article One?
Well, how do we go about making recommendation on town meeting floor?
We can end up, at this particular time, wait for our recommendation at town meeting, and probably spell out the fact that there's a question and get an answer at that particular time, and saying withholding the recommendation until special town meeting to answer the question and put that in.
Do we put the question in?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
We can put the question in even now.
Right, so that would be part of...
So we, maybe we'll end up getting an answer, because this is going to be submitted for the, for the sixth, for the Selectmen.
Right.
We could get an answer. We, on any particular article, it's allowed for the Advisory Committee to poll at that particular time as to their vote for yes, no, or whatever at the, at the, at the meeting.
At the meeting, okay.
That can be done that way.
All right. Then I would make a motion that we postpone our recommendation until the special town meeting in the fall.
Make it at the special town meeting?
Yeah.
Make the motion as a, we would make our recommendations at the special town meeting on November fourteenth.
For Article One.
For Article One.
For Article One, due to the question about the twelve-thousand-dollar difference from the audit report, audit management letter.
Yes.
And, to Bob's point, I think this is actually unforeseeable because the audits had not been done, so I think it is a use of free cash.
It is one-time, I mean, paying back debt, bills. I mean, it's, hopefully, after eighteen, we won't be doing this anymore, but, because we seem to be, we're paying bills from thirteen to eighteen.
Right.
You know, I mean, call it what you want, backfilling, you didn't cover, put enough money in for expenses.
Right.
Does that mean you didn't have enough revenue to cover the expenses? Is that a, the game again? I don't know.
I don't know.
But...
Let's hope this is extraordinary, and the fact that we get an audit every year, so...
Did describe, catch it, that we're going to end up asking the difference, why the difference is, is put that as a question when you submit?
Well, I heard, yes, I understand the motion.
Okay. Okay, because of the difference between...
Yeah, difference of twelve, approximately twelve-thousand dollars withhold, we're going to withhold our recommendation until we get an answer on why there's a variance from the, from the audit management letter of approximately twelve-thousand dollars.
I foresee that we have to pay these, but the question as to why the difference between the two is, I think is valid, and that we can end up putting this off till the special town meeting.
That was a big, well-attended meeting.
Yes.
I mean, and that's, it was almost the numbers of town meeting participation.
Oh, yeah.
And when you, when you put out a number, maybe some people don't remember it, but that number was put out, and if it's not correct, then perhaps you shouldn't put it out. Because that's part of the problem, I think, I see, is numbers are thrown around all the time, and then you come back and, it's not a thousand dollars, and it's not, you know, fifteen hundred or a couple hundred. When you get ten thousand or more, that's, that's a, that's a big goof, and it deserves an explanation of why, you know, we told you it was two twenty or whatever, and now it's twelve-thousand dollars more. Where did, where did that, what happened to cause that? Because I thought the audit was a fine look at the books. I mean, they spent almost two years doing it, if you count...
Close to five-hundred thousand.
Why, you know, if we had such, came up with such good numbers is what the information was put out, and now you're off by twelve thousand. It doesn't back up the contention that, you know, you have such great numbers now.
And that was really our role, to take and end up questioning this type of thing. So, we have a motion, and did we get a second?
Second.
We had a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, just a question, do we, why can't we make it an approval of the transfer? I mean, because this has been discussed at length, that we were going to have to pay these back bills, you know, these prior year deficits. There's been several meetings on, on that subject. Why don't we just state that, you know, whether or not we could approve it pending an explanation of the variance, rather than, you know, postponing the recommendation, or, you know, let's, let's just move forward, but I'm sure that they'd be able to provide an explanation of why it happened from that time to now.
I think in a perfect world, I would agree with you, but I don't think we live in a perfect world.
Well, I'm not striving for a perfect world either here, I'm just trying to be reasonable and move forward, so. Over twelve-thousand dollars, how much of an issue do we want to make this if there's a perfectly adequate reason for the difference and naked...
I don't think it's a, it's, 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 bringing it up is a problem. It's bringing it up to take and end up getting clarification and voting at the meeting.
I agree.
I mean...
Getting a clarification, but...
So your thoughts are basically we should still vote this, this particular amount, even though it's, it's, it's different than the one we had previously guarded?
Pending an explanation, yes.
And this is why somebody from that office should be here.
Right.
Yeah.
And I...
Maybe that's the, the, I mean, we can't do that on all of these by any manner, but do the fact that there is a discrepancy, that someone from the office isn't here to answer the question, and just highlight the fact that there wasn't somebody who had enough detail that could answer the question. I mean, I do get the point of, you know, why can't we? And I think that's just what we need to highlight. We could still say yes, you know, pending that, and, oh, by the way, you know, and the reason we had to do this is because there was nobody here.
Any further discussion?
So do you want to amend the motion, Paul?
That's what I was suggesting, yes, that we would approve it pending an explanation since nobody was available to explain the twelve-thousand-dollar variance. But we, you know, we approved the motion to do the transfer, but we want an explanation of it, of the variance.
Once you approve it, it's going to go on the warrant, and it's going to be submitted. Everybody will see that it's approved, but there won't be any question as to the dollar amounts. And I, I don't, I don't foresee the Administrator putting your question as to correction as to why the difference between the audit and this number. I mean, that's, I may be wrong. You have a valid point, and I don't disagree with it per se, but there's a, there's a question on the amount, and if we end up giving a positive, that's what it's, that's what's going to appear on the warrant when it gets submitted to the townspeople.
You're saying without our comment?
Right.
Or a question? That won't get, that won't get...
More than likely, it won't. The only place it might be is if you submit that to the town clerk, and she puts up our recommendations with that question. Whether or not everybody's going to see it that goes to town meeting, that's another question. I can't answer that. Any other discussion?
Not to beat a dead horse, but we're looking at another article here to backfill, the Administrator's words, the fiscal eighteen budget. I believe the committee went out on a limb and made recommendations for all those articles at annual town meeting. We asked for a clarification on that hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall, and that was the big point. And I believe the committee went out on a limb and recommended for all of the rest of the articles, because it was stated in that book that, you know, that budget was, was balanced and correct, and here we see, and, I mean, it's, yeah, it's fifteen-million-dollar budget, and it's off by thirty-five or forty thousand, whatever that exact number is, but it's, it's getting to the point they want us to recommend for things, and they're not correct. It just, it seems to defeat the purpose of finance committees throughout the common, when you're recommending for something that, that is not, that may be short or is not correct. It's, it's getting hard to recommend, go to town meeting and tell people, we recommend you vote for this, 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 and this, and especially when we know that it's, or we have a big question on why things have changed. And again, it's, it's not ten dollars, it's not a hundred dollars, it's, it's twelve thousand, and it was presented at a large, well-attended town meeting, not an annual, but a gathering of townspeople for a presentation of these audits. And we deserved an explanation either in this packet, if this was just emailed out today of why the difference, or someone here to answer these questions. I, I just, it's getting hard to, to recommend, and in good faith to the townspeople, when there's, you know, it's twelve thousand here, it's ten thousand here, it's five thousand there. I mean, at what point do we really stand up for the people? Even if it appears sometimes that they, they don't care, or they don't want to hear it, or by way that they don't attend, but I just, we can hold our recommendation until, and I think that gets, makes the point, and will get seen. I understand Paul's thing, you know, do it this way, because we do have to pay this, but I, I think town meeting floor deserves to know why there's a difference.
If we get that answer before town meeting, it would be very easy to take and end up polling everybody right, right before he asks, you know, for our recommendation.
The, right, and the twelve thousand is roughly a five percent difference. It's a five percent increase in what they're looking for, which it's not a, you know, half a percent, it's five percent, roughly. And so, I mean, I... I mean, I, I, I agree that we, we need to pay these bills, whether it's the two twenty-three or the two eleven. The bills need to get paid.
Right.
We need, as, as a town, we need to honor our, our debts and, and pay them. The, what's concerning for me is just the fact that numbers change constantly. At least it seems to be constantly, appearance of. So, I don't know how best to be able to tell the town that, yes, we agree these need to be paid, assuming everybody agrees that. And yet still get an answer and make it known that we're not getting consistent information.
Just a side note. I observed that the, one of the selectmen said that he had a prior engagement, just leave the, the office while we were sitting here. I'm very disturbed at that. The fact that he ended up indicating that he had a prior engagement, but yet he just came out of that office and just left. So, I mean
Well We can only do what we can do.
Right, we're, we're gonna do what's in our control. This is what is in our control.
I'm gonna take and cut the discussion that we've had, I think we've had plenty of discussion. The motion on the floor was taken, end up making our recommendation on the, on the town floor at that particular time. And also to ask the question as to, uh, put the, put it, put that out as a question to get clarification prior to special town meeting. Why the difference between this number and what was on the audit? Have the motion and a second. I'm gonna vote, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff? Okay, motion passes. Article two. Again, if there's some, we've, we've read these articles. Uh, I'll take it that unless somebody wants to read the summary and the actual motion, we can end up voting on it.
I make a motion that we support article two.
Have a motion to support article two. Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Article three. I'll entertain motion for article three.
I'll make a motion that we recommend for.
Have a motion to recommend for approval of article three. Do I second?
Second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I noticed that it doesn't say where it's being paid from. Is that says anywhere where this is
Said it would be out of the fiscal eighteen budget.
It says we're gonna take and pay these late bills out of the FY eighteen budget, doesn't say where. In the summary. Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second. Seeing and hearing no discussion, no discussion on article three. To recommend approval of article three. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article four. I think this is one that was asked for a, for the summary as well as the motion when it was sent. Do we need to take and end up reading that? I knew you had asked for that, Julie, did you wanna read that or?
Look, you want me to read it out loud, the summary?
Number four, yes, the summary or the motion that you
All right, um, the summary says, just before the annual town meeting, DOR met with us to review our revenue estimates. They wanted to make sure they were sound and were not being too optimistic. For the first time ever, they required that we not appropriate any more money from the ambulance reserve than we had on the day of town meeting. We needed to transfer three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to support the new advanced life support, but only had two hundred and twenty-five thousand on hand. This will complete the transfer of the amount needed. If the meeting does not complete this transfer, you will need, we will need to reduce the budget of the EMS accounts by the amount sought. You will likely see an article like this for the next several meetings, while the higher receipts from the ALS service build up so that there are sufficient funds at the time of the annual town meeting. My, the reason why I wanted to see the summary, well, I understood that they now have the hundred thousand dollars in the ambulance receipts fund. It says it's going to support the FY two thousand eighteen general fund operating budget. And I believe it should be very specific in that that money should go to fund the EMS account, not the general fund operating budget. That's the problem I have with this article.
So it should go against a specific account number?
Right. Usually when, this is a vote to transfer money.
Yep.
And we were always told that you had to have the account numbers if you're going to do, and they have to be correct. This does not give you an account number that it's going from or to. I don't know, not my rules.
And the, the other question is, can, because it's the ambulance receipts reserved?
Yep.
Is it allowable to move it into the general fund? I, I don't know, I, I know there's some, some accounts you can and some accounts you can't. And I don't know, I, I'm, I'm sorry, as a newbie, I have no idea whether this is an allowable function from this to the general fund or not.
They have put bills against it more or less in the past. What they're now changing is that in fact, they're actually transferring the money prior, actually in the budget. Or they're, they're attempting to take and end up moving that money from the amb, that's built up in the ambulance reserve receipt and transferring it as part of the budget process, instead of billing against that, that account as the bills come in. That's my, that's my understanding.
But they're going to the oper, general operating fund, which means it can go anywhere. And it becomes just a
That's, that's correct.
Piggy bank.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair, on, on this now, and I know there's people on this committee that have much more information on this. But I just, along the lines of what Liz was talking about, um, I remember reading, two thousand eleven, the fire chief brought forth a motion at town meeting.
That's what he did.
That says that the ambulance reserve receipts can only be used by the fire department.
By fire and EMS.
Yeah, um, so that goes to the, how can we, you know, transfer it to the general fund? I, I mean, I don't know if, there's been something since then, I just remember reading that in the spring.
Yes.
There are, if I may, there are two town meeting votes with regards to the ambulance receipts fund. And they both have that wording, that the ambulance receipts fund will be used to support fire EMS.
Right.
And prior to the municipal, now if you switch track a little bit, prior to the municipal modernization act, there were certain funds that you couldn't transfer out of, such as the group insurance or health insurance. If you put money in there, it had to go to pay that. Now, you can transfer any amount out of any fund to go anywhere. My, my problem is what was just stated. A town meeting vote says money put into this fund will go, only go to support this. And if that's what the town people voted for, that's what they have in mind. And this is one of those things that unless, I believe, unless it's brought up and underlined, so to speak, it will get voted on and then after the fact, people will ask the questions or bring up the concerns that this, members of this committee is bringing up right now. I, I believe it should be specifically worded of where the money is, is, is gonna go. And in the general operating fund, it, that covers all the expenses of the town. You, you're collecting something to cover something. It's almost like an enterprise, you, you, you figure you're paying this money and it's gonna go to support X. And now you're saying it can go to support A to Z. Again, I think may, maybe this is a recommendation we hold till the town floor to get clarification on this. And have the actual town meeting, and I do the research, have the actual town meeting vote concerning ambulance receipts. It's, again, it's, if we recommend for this, we're saying, yeah, take that money out of ambulance receipts. Maybe the intent is to cover EMS, but that's not, again, this, that's not what the motion says. And just like the fires, I mean, the police station thing where people said, well, the summary said this. Well, you look at the motion, what you actually voted on, and that's what you authorized the selectmen, town men, the selectmen to do. The, the motion is what you vote on. And once you say yes, well, I thought that, that doesn't cut it. You voted for this motion. And if we recommend for this motion, we are telling the people that we suggest to you to allow ambulance receipts to be used to cover A to Z in the, in the general fund budget. And I, that's not what townspeople voted on. And I don't believe that's what they have, uh, in their minds that, that, that fund is gonna be used for. It's, again, it's, it's all in the wording. The, the summary says, you know, the, the EMS fire will have to be cut, but down here it's to support the general fund. In the past, ambulance, that fund was set up and then it was saw as a cash cow and it was dissolved. And it went into the general fund and it was covering, it was covering from fire department, but it was being used to cover everything. Just like the nine one, E nine one one grant money was used to cover all kinds of things. I mean, it would cover the salaries of the dispatchers and take the dispatch salaries and transfer all kinds of money out of there just to pay other bills. It's, it's one of those things that appears that you don't have enough revenue to cover all your expenses. And the devil, the detail is in the wording. And I, I can't vote to recommend for this article because, because of that wording.
It sounds like this is another article that we will withhold our recommendation and ask the question as to it should be more specific as to put this into the, uh, the ambulance reserve receipt appropriation should end up going into the fire EMS wage, salary and wager, I think, account is, I don't have the, the, the book, but it sounds
Right, we don't have the account numbers anymore
Right.
For those, so I think, I, I will make that motion.
Make the motion to withhold
Withhold our recommendation.
Until special town meeting?
Until special town meeting.
Get clarification.
And I also think we should offer a substitute motion to try to put it in the correct account, what we feel is the correct account.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to withhold until the special town meeting for clarification. That it should go into the, the wage, EMS wages, salary and wages account.
Right, we might wanna contact the, uh, fire chief to get the correct account.
And you're also recommending a possible substitute motion?
Right.
Uh, would you be writing that up?
I will try.
Just in case.
All right, so all I would change is is where it goes to.
Yep.
Can we do those in two separate votes?
Yeah.
Because if, if, the, the reason is, I, I don't feel, I don't feel I can comfortably vote for transferring it into the I would have to recuse myself for the transferring into the
Okay, gotcha.
Into the, the fire
You can, yes.
Whatever account might end up Yeah, I, I
You can exclude yourself from the vote.
From, I, I'm going to need to.
Okay, so the first vote will be to withhold our recommendation pending further clarification on where the hundred thousand dollars is going to. So we should vote on that first, cause you, you can vote on that.
I can vote, I can vote on that part.
Right.
Just
You just can't vote on the second part.
So you can withhold the recommendation you can vote on?
Yes.
Yes, but you, right.
Yeah.
When it comes down to the actual vote to take and end up putting it in a specific account, I understand
Yeah.
Your, your
Yeah.
So we've got two motions here, or is this all just the same?
It's two motions.
Two motions. First motion is to withhold until the special, the special town meeting.
And so, is that seconded?
Would they have a second?
Yeah, I seconded that.
We had a second. I'll vote, we'll end up voting on that one first. The motion is to withhold until the, our recommendation, until the special town meeting. Uh, so we can get clarification as I'm moving it into the correct account. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. The second motion is for, for clarification?
No, it's for a substitute motion.
Oh, substitute motion?
Yeah, to include wording on where the hundred thousand dollars, which account it will go into.
Okay. We have a motion to end up correcting the wording to take and put it into the correct account rather than the general fund. That's a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are we gonna put in the specific account number or are we putting a general like fire EMS?
I'll, I was gonna call the fire chief and find out what accounts
We could actually look it up in the budget book also, if we had to.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. And if anyone else wants to take a shot at writing it.
And I'll, and I'll second that.
Anyone can write a substitute motion, has to be writing.
It has to be writing. We have a motion to take and have, have a substitute motion to, for, uh, putting it into the fire EMS fire EMS wage and salary account rather than the, the general operating budget. We got motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
I abstain, recuse myself.
Yes. Just abstain.
Abstain.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article five. I'll entertain a motion on article five.
I make a motion that we recommend against article five.
I'll second.
Have a motion to recommend against article five. And a second. Do I have any discussion?
I don't believe backfilling the FY two thousand eighteen operating budget with free cash is appropriate use of free cash.
And I believe that's what it says in the new financial policies. So.
Any other discussion? Have motion and a second for a no vote to article five. Uh, hopefully, we can end up having a, a statement as to why we, uh, a withholding recommendation.
I think the statement is the pol, is the financial policy just approved. That, that's the reason, at least.
Right. Mr. May, you wanna get a, give that a stab, writing that one up?
Sure.
All right.
Sure, I will do that.
I was gonna ask him anyway.
Okay. I thought it might work.
I kinda figured that's where we were going.
We have a motion and a second to disapprove article five with, uh, the reasoning for our disapproval because it, it violates the, the, uh, financial policies issued by the, by the selectmen. About backfilling. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Motion passes. Article six. Is that one that we, we wanted, the summary and also the motions? Did you wanna go through that, Julia?
Yeah. Summary, the town's building inspector is part-time. The plumbing slash gas and electrical inspectors are paid a percentage of the fees we charge, but with a limit on how much they can earn each year. This approach is sufficient to cover for our normal building permits, houses, decks, roofs, small commercial projects and the like. However, it does not work well for large, complex projects such as the new elementary school. We cannot pay them directly out of the building permits we will receive in this fiscal year. We will need to set aside pay for them to inspect this project each year from free cash. You will likely see an article like this for this project at two more town meetings.
I have to double check this, but I believe, I think there's money for this built into, that was built into the presentation with regards to the forty-seven million auth, already authorized by town meeting.
Right. It's part of that budget.
And I, it seems like we're asking for, you know, double dipping, uh, more than the forty-seven million already authorized for the product, for the project. Plus, there's a two, what is it, two and a half million contingency built in. I think that's the number. But there is a contingency amount built in. So one way or another, there's already money set aside in that project funding for forty-seven million to cover all of this stuff. I, I just, this will be an, another example of a project getting out of hand again because no one wants to put their finger on the start button.
Are, are we, i- is this asking for additional, to, to up the, just the compensation amount? Or, or actually add additional twenty-five thousand to the end budget? Oh, overall, the, the town budget?
Just to put it into an account, from the sounds of it?
It's to, it's going into the account of the Office of Development Services.
You believe that it was in the, in the bidding process, and part of the, the charges against that? Uh, you saying, Jeff?
I believe so, I, I wish I had the, uh-
Maybe we, I just saw a selectmen committee, I'll, I'll end up asking the selectmen, is that, was it i- in the, uh, the bid for the school that the, some, this, the charges for the plumbing and electrical inspector included along with the building inspector is part of the, the overall cost for the school?
Yes.
It was?
Yes, it was.
So this is, this is above and beyond that, then?
No, it is not.
Can you explain that, please?
I can, because we cannot subcontract our own employees, which means somebody else cannot pay our staff. Which means that money is already set aside as far as the building, um, permitting and, and the fees for the, for the new school. So what are, what are you asking me? The, the twenty-five thousand dollars, why we're putting it in that account? Is because we have to pay our own staff and we would be reimbursed by the, uh, the process of the program of the building of the new school. Because by law, some, we are, can't subcontract our own employees. If that makes any sense.
Thank you.
So this would mean it's just a pass through? So we'd have to pay these fees upfront and then we'd be reimbursed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, it's part, it's part of the forty, well, actually, it's not forty-seven million right now, I think it's a little bit less than that, but, uh, thirty-plus million dollars here and there for the new school. It's in that process of the, of getting the fees for the permits and the inspections. So there is that in there. And you're right, Jeff, there is a cushion in there, about a two and a half million dollar cushion as well.
But that's not what this says, though. It says from free cash, not from transferring-
That's correct, because again, we have to pay our own staff. We will be reimbursed from the permits and the, and the inspection fees that come out of the permitting process.
Mr. Capital, may I ask, where would be, we'd be reimbursed to?
Probably most likely, most likely, the general fund, which will be, which will turn to free cash the following year. The town is not losing any money. We're trying to take care of our own employees and not break the law.
Does that answer the questions that folks have? I'll entertain a motion one way or the other on this article.
Well, as I understand it, I would make a motion to approve article six.
Have a motion to approve article six. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, it goes under the same policy. We're trying to use free cash for operating expenses. Doing the exact, I, I don't see any difference in this than from the prior one as far as the policy is concerned.
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly, uh, what I was gonna say also. As I see this still, um, with, under the new policies, it says emergency or extraordinary or unforeseen events. Um, you know, even though this is called extraordinary, um, I don't think it's extraordinary because this has been a plan for ten years. The school, the whole project, the building of this has been going on for a long time. I think, you know, I don't know if it, I don't think it fits into the emergency, extraordinary, or unforeseen. Um, I do understand the reasoning and the rationale. Um, I just don't think, uh, free cash is where it can come from by the policies. My personal opinion.
Again, and, and alternate is that it comes out of, that it's a transfer from the school budget, however you, you get there, we, I, I think, at least, I understand the need for the additional money to, you know, to pay the inspectors. I, I fully understand that. It's just where the funds are, how, how it's being funded is my concern.
Where it's coming from.
Where it's coming from.
Any further discussion? Okay, this is a motion to approve the article number six. And a second. This is a vote for approval. Cricket?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
No? Julie?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and that's a, we have no recommend, basically, no recommendation. We have, uh, you may wanna get clarification as to those folks that voted against it, you can end up standing at, at, at the meeting and saying why, uh, you feel that way because it's, it's coming from free cash. Okay? So that's a no recommendation. Article seven.
Do you want me to read the summary?
Yes, please.
All right. Summary, it is feared that the boiler in the emergency management building in Baldwinville may fail during this coming winter. The director has been able to obtain about five thousand five hundred in grants toward its replacement. We need approximately seven thousand five hundred more to have sufficient funds to cover the replacement. Our nineteen ninety-four six-wheel dump truck has deteriorated to the point it is feared it may not be able to make it through the winter season. There is a seven-month lead time to get it. This will allow us to have a new truck in place by next spring and hopefully, hopefully before this one fails. The hundred and sixty thousand will be supplement with monies we originally hoped to use to buy the new dump truck body for, to, in order to complete the purchase. I'll make a motion in support of this article.
To what?
Recommend for.
For. We have a motion to recommend this article, article seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to recommend article seven. Any further discussion?
Uh, just questioned, uh, capital, did this come, come to capital planning?
Yes.
It did.
Both did.
Both did.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Well, I'll weigh in on this. My, my only concern is that we're putting a boiler in that's used hardly ever during the wintertime. I believe we had at one time a building assessment group that looked at this. They looked at it as the building is not handicap accessible and there was a number of issues on bringing it up to handicap accessibility. And I don't know if they had a recommendation to move that, uh, office to, uh, to School Street, 'cause there was room in there. Generally, those, the, uh, emergency management and the fire department are generally to, together. And it would, you could end up closing off the water and the heat. It's a storage for vehicles, et cetera. That's, that's, that would be my concern, is that we're putting monies into a building that, that we hardly ever use and that, uh, coming from where it is, um, it may end up being better, uh, used somewhere else, that's all. I mean, I understand they want heat, but the question, I'm just questioning the, the building from what I've, I've read. And if you go back to the original handicap book that was way back when, and it's, it's a big binder. It did show that that building was not handicap accessible and there's a number of issues with that building because it's got narrow stairways beside. If they have somebody that's, that needs to access that, it's gonna be a problem to take and end up using that building besides. So I mean, that's, those are my concerns. We have a motion to approve article seven. And a second. Any more discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
I guess.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Article eight. Is this another one that you wanted, the summary and, and all, Julie, I can't remember?
I think I had a problem with article eight. I'll read it anyway. Um, the summary, when we borrow money, the banks offer us a premium to borrow from them. We use, to apply that premium, after we paid the costs of issuing the debt to offset the annual principal and interest payments, the state changed the law in the fall of two thousand sixteen. We must now use an excess, I think it's an excess, premium to reduce the amount we borrow or for other capital projects. This article will line up prior borrowing authorizations with the change in the state law and allow us to use the excess premium to reduce the total we borrow. So it looks like, I, I make a motion that we recommend for, because it looks like we're adopting the general law so that we're in compliance.
We have a motion to accept article eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to accept article, a yes vote on article eight and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article nine.
All right, I'll read the summary. The town authorized the borrowing of four hundred thousand to make loans to people who needed to upgrade their septic systems. We borrowed two hundred and five thousand dollars. The Board of Health does not believe it needs the balance that was authorized. This will reduce the amount of authorized debt that we carry on our books. I make a motion that we recommend for article nine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to ex, to, uh, a, a yes vote on article nine and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article ten.
Article ten. The town has a- The town has about thirty thousand in checks that have not been cashed going back a number of years. We could turn it over to the State Treasurer under abandoned property program. The town auditor recommends we adopt a version of this program intended for city and towns. We still have to try to locate these people and give them a last chance to claim their monies, but it will be count, come town property if they do not. I make a motion that we recommend for.
Have a motion to recommend Article ten. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to recommend Article second, uh, and a second. Any discussion?
Is that Jeff's second?
Yeah. Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article eleven.
Article eleven. Summary, this will use a portion of the town's free cash to begin to build these accounts up to their needed levels. The question I had about this is what happens to the other three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars? That would remain in free cash, assuming everything were voted according to the selectman's recommendation.
Would you care to weigh in? Mr. Capitalist?
No comment at this time.
Have a motion one way or the other on this one?
If I might ask Julie, um, where the, the three hundred and ninety-six thousand, the number you're getting?
Yep.
Um, what I'm getting is that's the balance after the expenses is the three ninety-six, six ninety-two, and that's what we'll be splitting. That's not the balance after this. Cause I have this-
I believe there remains, if you include this article plus all the other articles that have free cash. Okay, if they're all voted in the affirmative, it comes to a sum that's less than one million forty-two thousand dollars, which is what we have been certified in free cash.
Right, I have the one million forty-two thousand dollars. Um, the OPEC deficits of two hundred and twenty-three, three ninety-six, the OPEC's backfill of twenty-two-five, the, uh, Templeton Elementary School inspections of twenty-five, and the capex of a hundred and seventy-five, plus the snow and ice of two hundred thousand brings us down to three ninety-six, six ninety-two. Um, from, uh, the letter here from Kelly and Carter, um, was that the, uh, that three ninety-six, six ninety-two would be broken out as working capital of a hundred and ninety-nine, one ninety-two, OPEC stabilization a hundred and thirty-seven-five, capex stabilization is forty, and OPEB reserve trust is twenty. If you would like, you can.
Yeah, if I could, cause I did see that in an email.
Yes. Do you want to say that?
Yeah, thanks. Where's working capital in this article?
Right under the balance.
Right, in this article.
Oh, it's it's not there.
There.
If you add up all those three, it comes up to one ninety-seven-five.
Right, this comes up to one ninety-seven-five. So according to this, there's
One ninety-nine.
One ninety-nine, one ninety-two that's unallocated.
Right, unallocated.
Where is it? That's the question. So does that go into the stabilization like that, or does that have?
There's no motion.
This is, this is-
I'll ask, I'll ask the question for, from the, the chairman of the OS. Is that gonna be held as free cash? Uh, John?
What's that?
The one ninety-nine, one ninety-two, is that gonna be held as free cash?
Yes.
For what purpose?
Uh, rollover.
Pardon me?
Rollover.
Rollover? Cause your policy basically said we shouldn't be using
That's correct.
That free cash even during the year.
That is correct, sir.
So you, is this anticipated that it's there for emergencies, or because you got, you got your stabilization? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand why you would hold that much free cash.
That's where I could put this. Well, as you well know, the way this town handles money in the, in the past, which, as you well know, uh, we felt that it'll be best, uh, in the best interest of the community to, uh, not, uh, not put that money out right now. To leave it right where it is, where we can't be touched until the following year, uh, once it rolls over free cash for the following year.
So it's gonna be held in free cash and not used?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which makes financial economical sense.
Well, I think that some of the, the members are looking at that, that, that could be put into destabilization. That's, that's why I'm trying.
I thought you guys all had all, all the information that we had, so I mean, maybe you guys, Mr., Mr. May hit the nail right on the head. I mean, he had, that's why I said no comment, cause I knew one of yous were gonna come, come to the table and say, well, this, 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 and this, and, and he's right. Everything was accounted for, one in ten percent. With the security and safety of the people in mind. And hopefully the future of Templeton.
Can someone enlighten me to find the, the benefits of leaving it in free cash versus the benefits of putting it into the stabilization? Because based on the description, it sounds like it's going to be used for the same intended purpose of kind of cushioning the town a bit. So why wouldn't we? I'm trying to figure out where really is the better place to put it.
I think that's a legitimate question.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I think she's asking you, John.
Yeah, John.
Well, if it's in stabilization, no matter which stabilization account it's in, which we have too, um, there's still the resource and, and avenues that that money can be touched. For unforeseen expenses, other things. We wanna make sure we have, you know, going forward, uh, this town needs to have the capabilities of, uh, of saving, saving dollars, uh, for the future. And if you keep it in stabilization, it still has the same, it still can be touched through the advisory committee, uh, through it. It still can be touched, no matter which, uh, things can happen.
It needs a vote of, it, it, it needs a, 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 a vote to get it out of stabilization. That's not a majority vote.
Right.
Because the stabilization policy that you have says it's, it's gonna take and end up, I, I think, two-thirds, two-thirds vote are better than that.
That's right.
So I mean, that's, I think that's what her question is, is it's, it's probably safer in the stabilization than to leave it as free cash.
If, if you had a, um, critical malfunction of a building, critical malfunction of a vehicle, where we talking a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is critical to the operation of the community, we would have to take it out of stabilization. And yeah, it needs a two-thirds vote, but again, mo, which town entity is not gonna allow, uh, you know, plumbing operations to continue, sanding operations to continue?
That comes out of the snow and, and ice.
It does, but I'm just, a backfill, a backfill, if needed backfill, uh, for any type of unforeseen emergency that comes up.
But you still need a town meeting vote to take it out of free cash
You do.
as well as stabilization. So if your intention is to not use this money or, or to have a higher threshold, you'll put it into stabilization.
I understand what you're saying.
Right. That's the question, because your financial policies that you just recently voted on say that you're not supposed to use one-time money, which free cash is, to backfill your budget.
That's right.
I'll entertain a motion on Article eleven. Either yes or no, or withhold until we town meeting or whatever. It's up to you.
I'd like to make an alternate, I'd like to
Pardon me?
I'd like to make a motion
Go ahead.
against with an alter, with an alternate proposed, um-
Substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Okay. So what's your motion, Cricket?
Um, the, 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 let's see if I can do this right. The, um, to because it doesn't, the, the, the working capital, um, at least a, a portion of the working capital needs to be in stabilization, so huh, I, I move that, um, we take the, the, the three numbers here, as shown here, the hundred and thirty-seven-five, forty thousand, twenty thousand, as, as stated, and move another hundred and sixty thousand into stabilization, leaving thirty-seven, no, um, almost thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand in free cash.
So your motion is to end up issuing a substitute motion to increase stabilization by a hundred and sixty thousand? Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I would like to just make a comment. Um, I believe the more money we have in stabilization, we will get a better bond rating. There's a direct correlation between our, the amount of money we have in stabilization and our bond rating. And I think this will get us closer to, not much, but a little bit closer to our five percent.
Yeah.
Which is one of the goals that we have as
Yeah, and the selectmen have also.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second to take and end up from working capital a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and put it into the stabilization, which would make the general stabilization seven-nine two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discuss, discussion on this motion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yeah.
Jeff?
I'm gonna give the dog a little rope one more time. No.
And I'll vote yes, but we need to take and end up telling the, uh, the folks as to why we were recommending the increase.
Okay.
Uh, if, if you, are you willing to take and end up writing that up?
Yeah, I'll write that.
The, the motion and also the, the reason why, please?
Yep.
Thank you. So we, we have, the, the motion was taken, increase it? Why, with substitute motion? By a hundred and sixty thousand. Okay. Article twelve.
Sorry, this stuck. The summary, since zoning became a reality in Templeton in two thousand and six, the planning board recognized that there will be a need for proposed adjustments to the zoning areas to support new growth that includes small business. The area proposed for change is on a major numbered route, has heavy traffic, and include many non-conforming small businesses already, helping to put them into, into zoning compliance. This proposed change will provide opportunity for new small businesses, mom and pops, and encourage local residents to invest in Templeton without having to fit into commercial industrial area of Templeton, while providing opportunities for employment prepared by the planning board.
I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend for Article twelve.
Have a motion to recommend a yes vote for Article twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, we'll go for a vote. This is a yes vote for Article twelve. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Upstain.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Upstain.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Article thirteen.
Article thirteen, summary, since zoning became a reality in Templeton in two thousand and six, the planning board recognized that there will be a need for proposed adjustments to the zoning areas to support new growth that includes small business. The area proposed for change is on a major numbered route, has heavy traffic, and include many non-conforming small businesses already, helping put them in zoning compliance. This provo, proposed change will provide an opportunity for new small businesses, mom and pops, and encourage local residents to invest in Templeton without having to fit into the commercial industrial area of Templeton, while providing opportunities for employment.
I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Is this the one Baldwinville Road or is the other one?
Uh, this one is. First one was Baldwinville Road. This one is-
This is for Patriots Road.
This is Patriots.
Patriots Road.
Right. Well, Baldwinville Road isn't a numbered highway. That was in the last one. This one is a numbered highway then. And why is this being done at the special instead of the annual? Do we know?
I have no idea. Could we have a weigh-in on the chairman and the select board as to why this is being done now versus, uh, at the annual town meeting?
With all respect, Mr. Chairman, I have no comment.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion one way or the other on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend for Article thirteen.
Have a motion to recommend Article thirteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Upstain.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Motion passes. Article fourteen.
Article fourteen, the summary. Ah, there we go. All right. Summary, the town seeks to appropriate a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from the Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of purchasing four passes of land totaling approximately a hundred and two acres, C attached, lots B, D, C, D, F. At the former Templeton Developmental Center, from the Walto Fernal Corporation, provided that the town is awarded a land acquisition for natural diversity land grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A conservation restriction would be placed on the land to keep it open and would limit its use to passive recreation, including hunting. The land grant would reimburse the town for up to seventy percent of the cost. The proposed purchase price is based on an appraisal done for the town using CPA funds. These lands were shown to be owned by the Fernal Corporation rather than the Commonwealth through the courts, unless the transaction will require an agreement with the landowner as well as receipt of the state grant. I make a motion to recommend for Article fourteen.
Have a motion to recommend for Article fourteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one thing, and maybe again, it's, maybe it's something I'm missing here. Well, I guess it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be in the summary, but I was going to say, I know there was discussion at the capital planning that unless. The Conservation Commission or Community Preservation. Commission, Committee. Got a sixty percent reimbursement that the deal was going to fall apart.
That's my understanding also.
Yeah. And. I was just looking for that on here. I don't think it's here, but it doesn't have to be, it's just. You know, interesting information for the. Voter.
So that can be brought up? So why we voted up or down?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, my other question is regarding hunting on that land. I don't know how you're going to restrict or how you, because not all of the lots are contiguous.
Yep.
So I, I don't know how that would work.
If it's conservation land per se. I don't, I don't know if there's any restrictions on how it's, how it's used other than that. They're small parcels, that could be a problem as to, to do with that, but that would be with the fishing game co, commission once with the, the town takes it, as to, to monitor any hunting on this, this property, I would think. A motion and a second, any more discussion? This is for Article fourteen. Is it correct, yeah, fourteen, a yes vote for Article fourteen. Seeing and hearing no, more discussion, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Article fifteen.
Article fifteen. Right now, we have the town election first, then the annual town meeting on a Saturday. This will put the town meeting first, meaning that the, the select board that approved the budget and warrant will be before you. It also means that you will be able to receive presentations on and debate any proposed overrides or debt exclusions before you go to the polls to vote on them. Also, there has been a drop in attendance at the annual town meeting since it was moved to Saturday. It is hoped that moving it back to a weeknight will help improve attendance. Finally, by moving it a bit later in the month, we will get a bit more time to work on the budget and hopefully have better information on state aid and school budgets as we finalize our proposal to you. I make a motion to recommend for Article fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion to recommend Article fifteen and a second, any discussion?
Yes, the information that we were provided for the attendance numbers was inaccurate.
Noted.
So. It was about a hundred off for the, the last meeting.
In discussion with one of the other towns when we went to the meeting, this can be a two-edged sword, it, you can end up, selectmen that are still there can end up dropping a budget that's not sustainable by the next group. Which, which could be a problem, but that. I, I guess some, some towns saw that, they, they had this discussion, I don't see it as that.
I, I see it as two separate things. I, I get the idea of having the. Voting, having the, the original, the folks that put together the budget and everything, the ones standing up in front of the town.
Yep.
But I have a problem with moving to Saturday, moving from Saturday, specifically because the information that was provided was inaccurate.
Yeah. Have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Who's the second on that one?
Paul. No more discussion, Cricket?
No.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. It passes. Article sixteen.
As with the ambulance receipts, DOR will not let us appropriate monies in excess of what were in the account as of the time of town meeting. Since then, we have signed a new cable contract and know our revenue stream with certainty. This will let the committee tap into that revenue stream to expand public access. I make a motion to recommend for.
Have a, a motion to recommend Article sixteen, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Cricket?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I'd like to go back to, since we have a selectmen here, to Article one, maybe we can get an answer on that particular one. There was a question on Article one. That the amount of the deficit for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, as stated in the audit report in February, excuse me, April, was two hundred and eleven thousand. In this particular article, there's a twelve thousand dollar difference, it's an increase, is there a, a particular reason why? I mean, we were going, we were, basically, we were, we were looking for an answer, we're just withholding our, our recommendation until special town meeting, until we get clarification on it. Or do we have to go to administrators to take and find that out?
Are, are we talking about the twenty thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen numbers?
Yes.
Like twenty thirteen, a hundred and twelve thousand, one ninety-two, fifty-nine, four ninety-four, and the fifty-one, seven, ten?
Yes.
And there's a different, and from what the audit guys, what the audit company had?
Yeah.
In the management letter, yes.
Yeah, the management letter, there's a difference. That was the question that we had. We weren't voting for or against?
No, I understand.
It's just withholding until the special town meeting to get clarification.
I'm, I'm making a note right, I don't have the answer for you right now.
Okay.
I'm making a note though.
Because it's a five percent, roughly a five percent difference, increase in, in.
I got you.
Significant.
And you weren't here for Article four, but we were also withholding until the special town meeting for that one because it, in Article four, it talks about moving the hundred thousand dollars. From the ambulance reserve receipt into the general fund. The question was, is why is it going into general fund and not to the specific, specific account for salaries and wages for the EMS which, which the other. Monies had gone to in the budget. I mean, that's, that was the question, and again, that's, we were just withholding the, our recommendation until we get clarification on that one.
And your question is, why is it going to the general fund?
Yes.
As, as you probably well know, last year, we discussed this in great length, that because there was so much controversy in the paramedic salaries, the EMT salaries, the firefighter salaries, that we all put into the general fund, it's only, this ambulance receipts receivable is only to be used for ambulance personnel and purposes only, but all the money comes out of the general fund. That was, that was a change from last year. You don't recall that?
That's not how, that's not how the, the actual warrant article was written a number of years ago. It specifically said it's supposed to go for wages and not into any other fund, and that's really, it, it's not, I, I, the idea of, of not, not putting that money towards EMS. It's just the account that it's going to be going into.
Basically, what on the, what you'll see, it goes into their account, but obviously, because the way the money is moved, it goes to the general fund, but on the account ledger that you see, which your accounts payable, accounts receivable, all the monies that go in, it has a, it has a line item account for ambulance receipts receivable. But as far as where the dollars itself goes, it goes into the general fund. Does that make, does that make sense?
Every time we've done a transfer, we've transferred out of account, we have an account number, and we put it into an account with an account number, not just to the general fund.
It does have an account number that is sitting into the ambulance reserve receipt already, and it would be moved to the, the salary, and, and that's really, it's, it's a transfer from one account number to another and not necessarily the general fund, and that's really the, the bottom of the question.
Some of the accounts that we have are, are, are accounts that we make, it's not like we have, we do have a lot of bank accounts, don't get me wrong, but, I mean, it's not like it's going to like, you know, one account, they all come out of the same account, which is the general fund. What you see as far as account numbers are numbers that, that are here for the town to operate, so we know what budgetary responses are out there for across the board, each department. But the, all the money primarily goes to, to the general fund, if that makes any sense?
No.
Okay.
Not to me, but.
I can get, I can get you more clarification from the accountants, but that's basically, we talked about this last year, and because there was a lot of controversy and, and discussion around it, and to make the townspeople still be aware that this money, because of the budgetary shortfall from last year, because of not so much shortfalls, but because of we, the DOR says we can appropriate money, we can only appropriate money that we already have in hand.
Right.
So when we last, as budget season last year, why we went to a deficit is because we didn't have the three hundred thousand dollars in hand to appropriate, we only had the two hundred thousand.
Right.
Right.
I mean, so basically, this is going to offset the budget, so this money goes back into the fight about the ambulance receipts receivable.
But that two hundred and, that, that, that monies that went last year, that was shot, the hundred thousand dollars, it was a two fifty-five, actually went into a specific account number and not general fund, and that's really the, the, the issue that we see.
What I'll do is I'll get more information on you, so you have.
Because that's going to be a, a question.
Understood.
I mean.
Clear question. Clear question.
I mean, we're not with, we're not saying no to the thing, we're just getting clarification, okay?
Give me a yes, no?
Okay.
I'll have to answer to me, I mean, these are great questions. I mean, if you have these questions, I'm sure the people are going to have the same questions, so.
That's where they're representative, basically, as you understand.
I do, I embrace it.
Okay. We can end up, I have a motion to close pre-town meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to close pre-town meeting. And a motion to close and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anything on the new business or, or stuff that we should go back and address? At this particular time?
No, we closed.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
She just wants to stay.
Okay.
You do that.
Thank you.